Welcome, everyone, to our City Council meeting this afternoon. It's shortly after 5:00 on Monday, August the 2nd. And we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Deb.
Harley.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum this afternoon. I would entertain a motion in to approve today's agenda. Someone?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, on behalf of the city, I just want to extend our sympathy to the Royce Thomas family. Royce died a week ago at the age of 39, and he was a member of the Algonah City Fire Department. So, please keep that family in your thoughts in these difficult days ahead. And we do want to thank our videographer this evening, Shay Tilges. Is that right? Okay, all right. And then hope everyone has an opportunity to attend the Cassuth County Fair. It's this week. There is free admission. There's a fair parade on Tuesday, midway for the kids, rodeo, live entertainment, lots going on there. So, I hope everyone has an opportunity to support the county fair. So, does council have anything?
Just one thing. Over the last month, Algonah was hosting the state's Iowa Watercolor Show, which is the best of the watercolor artists in the state. That was at Algonah Publishing, and thanks to them for hosting the show. I know quite a few people came in just during the regular workdays to see the show. So, that was very much appreciated. A couple ladies from Des Moines came up to pick that show up today, and we spent some time with them. And I guess I was very impressed in the end with how impressed they were with our town. You know, we just walked them around some, showed them the Sunshine mural down there by Exceptional Treasures. You know, pointed out some of the stores on Main Street, what was there. And one of the ladies, before she left, said, you know, her and a friend of hers like to just do these little short trips around the state and, you know, find a fun place and surprise each other with what they find there. And she says Algonah is for sure to be their next stop. So, that she was asking fun places to go and things to do. So, I thought that was very positive. Pat on the back for Algonah.
Very good. Thank you, Harley. Anybody else have anything? Okay, hearing none, then. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 6. That's update from Jacob, city administrator.
Those who have been by Teets Park the last couple of days will have noticed that work on the Shelter House has begun. So, utilities have been extended, and the foundation and grading work are now underway. We also have a number of street projects that are going on. And as people will notice when walking or driving around town, we have Matt with Bolden make, one of the project engineers here this evening, to provide a brief update on the various street projects. Thank you, Jacob.
I guess we'll start with Main Street. We have all the underground work complete now. The second storm ran hole that we were waiting on from the supplier is here and was put in last week. The road is completely rocked, and we're real close to getting ready for paving. Sounds like the subcontractor, the concrete subcontractor works construction is coming next week to start preparation for paving. So, maybe in the next week or early the following week, we'll have some concrete down on Main Street. Moore Street has started construction and closed McGregor again today for the next few weeks until we can get all the underground done in that intersection. They're working on watering right now. They still have the storm sewer to do in that intersection, you know, pavement removals. So, safety-wise, instead of opening and closing McGregor, many times, we're just going to keep the detour in place for the entirety of the construction to let bring, get the underground in, and then put the gravel base down for the paving and then pave the street. So, that's looking to be about a five-week closure. But instead of having the detour on and off all the time, it's going to be the safest for the contractor and for the general public just knowing and anticipating that it's going to be closed for a while. So, Snap-on, they've started mass grading the pond out in the East Business Park, and they're going to get started on underground in the next probably two weeks out there. They'll start with the highway gorge underneath Highway 18, probably in a couple of weeks. And then the Mill and Overlay Project, 2021 Street Improvement Project, has started last week. Removals and grading on Booster Street, the block that we're doing full reconstruct on the curb on, has started, and the concrete sub is coming tomorrow to start putting concrete down on that street again. So, curb and driveways, and then they'll kind of move on to the next blocks. We did add Kennedy. That is the change order number one for that job. We added Kennedy Street from 169 to Booster as an addition to that project because the bids came in lower than expected. So, there will be a little, couple more blocks done, three more blocks done with the project this year, and still be well within budget. Is there any questions or anything on any project?
Moore Street, what's the completion date that we're looking at right now for?
Oh, I would say we got a couple of weeks of underground left to do, and then they'll be ready to pave. So, probably a week or two where the grading and then a week of paving on that job. We're doing sidewalks, so the concrete crew will have driveways and the parking areas for the funeral home and the church and then all the sidewalks to do on top of that. So, I would say end of September would be a reasonable.
Couple months? Good.
Reasonable timeframe. Snap-on will go a little bit later than that because there's a lot of utility work out there.
True.
As soon as underground crew gets done on Moore Street, they're going to go out to Snap-on. So, a couple of weeks of underground on Moore, and then they'll focus on the underground portion of Snap-on driveway, which should be pretty easy digging because there's not a whole lot of utilities or things to dig around out there. It's all generally new construction, but infrastructure. Anything else?
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Did you all figure out for the change order discussion?
Since we got to hear why not.
Yep, that's fine. I will.
And Jacob, you have anything else that you want to add in your report? Okay. All right. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 7. That's the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any items that are not on the agenda. I don't see anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak. Guys, Deb, anybody on the phone? No. Okay. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 8, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from the July 19th council meeting, approve the bills to be paid this cycle, and to approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley and a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 9 is a public hearing concerning the vacation portion of Elm Street. It's 5:11, and we'll go ahead and we'll open that public hearing. Jacob?
Earlier this year, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I had submitted petition to vacate a portion of Elm Street east of Clark. Sorry, I'm trying to get the map hold up here. The north half of that unapproved street that was referred to the Plan and Zoning Commission, who came back with a recommendation to approve the vacation based on the proposed plan to develop a park in that area. Notice was published in the newspaper. We have not received any comments since publication. We'll say, though, that during the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, there is just some question on how this impacts the previously vacated alley to the south. It has no impact on that at all. It is simply the, just the north half. The south half is already vacated and sold, and that will not change. So, it's just that, that north half, the highlighted portion that will be vacated.
Okay. There's no one in the council chambers that would like to speak? Is there anyone on the phone either that? Okay. It's 5:12, then. We'll go ahead and we'll close that public hearing, and we'll move to new business agenda item number 10. And this is an ordinance establishing a new property maintenance code.
This is the third reading of a ordinance that would establish a new chapter of the Algonah Municipal Code, Property Maintenance Code. I will go over some of the highlights. First, it creates the department within the Public Works Department of maintenance inspections and charges the Public Works Director with being the property code maintenance person or their design name, directs for inspections, and gives authority on the right of entry on property maintenance. And I should just state that property maintenance, we are only looking at the exterior of properties. It applies to all structures, residential, commercial, occupied or not, whether it's owner or tenant. It lays out the process for if there's violations of this ordinance, giving notice and then providing reasonable time to, for the violation to be addressed. If it is not addressed, or they're not making a good faith effort to approve, then it also lays out the process for enforcing, and the violation of this code is considered a municipal infraction. It also has in there that any properties that have been served notice of violation of this, if they are to sell that property, they need to provide documentation to the new owner that this violation exists and that notice of violation goes with the property, and fails to do so is its own separate municipal infraction to prevent anyone from, if they get notice, just moving properties around from one LLC to the other or someone buying property and innocently being unaware of issues. Also defines dangerous structures and premises, and then provides the means for if it's determined to be an imminent danger, emergency measure, sending forth the notices and closing of any buildings. Provides for means of appeal to anyone provided with the notice violation. The city council is the board of appeals for all violations of this chapter. Like I said, the code focuses on the exterior of the property. So, that can be the, you know, the ground itself. Make sure it's there's safe sanitation, does not have any greater drainage problems, is not harboring rodents or pests. It also puts forth regulations regarding swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs that they need to either be, for pools that have at least 24 inches of water, they need to have at least a 4-foot fence or a manufacturer-approved cover. And then the bulk of the ordinance is focusing on the exterior structure of the property to ensure that's maintained in good repair, structurally sound, and that does not pose a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. And then gives a number of definitions of what's constituted an unsafe structure as well as other maintenance requirements in terms of ensuring that the exterior surfaces are well-maintained. And then also provides for, in the event that a property does have to, you know, there is an issue and has to be boarded up or something like that, and the interim law, while things are being fixed, provides the standards for how items are to be boarded to ensure that there is access, you know, it's not just an open window that someone's, or a kid's going to, you know, wander into. Provides the standards for those. This is based, the bulk of it, off of the International Property Maintenance Code adopted to Algonah and kind of some of our items where it has crossover with our existing code of things like grass height, how we get notices and just to make sure we're consistent on some of those things. But more or less the bulk of it, it mirrors the International Property Maintenance Code. That is the standard. We will be putting together and publishing just kind of an FAQ on this as well as an explainer document. The ordinance is about 20 pages of just kind of being the highlights as well as where people can find copies of the ordinance online or pick up printed copies at City Hall. But more or less a cheat sheet on these are the important things you need to be aware of.
And even if passed, this still needs to be published before it becomes official, right?
Correct. Yeah, it will need to be published, and will probably be next week at the earliest that the publication will be made.
Okay.
Make a motion to waive the third reading of the ordinance amending the municipal code.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is this where we adopt it, then? A motion to adopt the ordinance amending the municipal code.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don again. Any discussion this time?
In a way, first, we have to approve the third consideration.
Thank you.
I apologize.
We do. Yep, we'll approve it.
Since we made the reading, we now need to approve the third.
I'll rescind my motion and motion that we approve the third reading of the ordinance amending the municipal code.
And I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second then to approve the third reading. Any discussion? Thank you, Paul. Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the municipal code.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don to adopt this new ordinance. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 11 is an ordinance vacating a portion of Elm Street.
This is agenda item pertaining to the public hearing that was held of Agenda Item Number 9. This ordinance simply vacates the north portion of Elm Street east of Clark as shown here in the exhibit.
I'd motion to waive the first reading of vacating the portion of Elm Street located east of Clark.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney and a second from Tyler to waive the first reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Then a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney and a second from Tyler to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12, this is a resolution referring to a repayment of revolving loan fund loan.
Meyer Home Improvement received a retail RLF loan from the city back in 2017. The loan has been paid in full. This resolution acknowledges repayment and avoids the collateral on loan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you, Meyer Home Improvement. We wish you continued success. Agenda Item Number 13, this is a resolution authorizing a release of mortgage.
This is for residential property at 515 West State Street. They participated in 2007, the community development block grant, CEBG Housing Rehabilitation and Repair Program. An older version of the program that the city recently applied for. As part of that, those are federal grant dollars that are allocated to state and then sub-granted out to local jurisdictions. So, with those grant dollars, they put a mortgage on the property for five years. So, if you get these improvements and turn around and sell your house in a year, you're paying some of that back. The mortgage, like I said, is forgiven after five years. The mortgage on this property was, has been considered forgiven since 2013, but it's still recorded over at the county. So, this resolution just authorizes the execution of the release of the mortgage from that since it has been forgiven. And then on a side note, I've asked the city attorney to look at some of the other applicants from that time period to see if this is an anomaly of that, why this mortgage wasn't released or if there's a number of them we need in the future to just go through and formally release them all since they've been forgiven for nearly eight years.
I was questioning if there was a tracking system at all or if you just waited for people to request it.
That's what we're looking into. This is the first one I've run across. Don't know yet for some reason this one didn't, or if we've just been doing them one at a time. And if that's the case, it makes sense just to do it all at once and be done with.
Okay, move to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Harley and a second from Jody. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 14 is a resolution approving a work order for the airport runway project.
So, back on July 6th, City Council approved an agreement, mastered him with Bolden make to be the airport planning consultant. That just more or less set forth the general agreement, but didn't have the actual dollar numbers in there. So, this work order one is taking that general agreement and then actually specifying the tasks and the dollar amounts for said tasks. As we recall, this was an agreement that we originally had with CGA. And then with the changes that they've had, council elected to switch airport consultants. So, these project tasks were, you know, previously submitted to the FAA, and they reviewed the numbers and approved them in terms of what they would be willing to fund for the improvements. I'm happy to say that what Bolden make came back with, it's the, ultimately, the total is the exact same as what the original contract was and where they've broken it down minus what CGA threw their final bill. So, there is no dollar change from the original contract amount that was entered into. And then this now more or less just spells that out for the remainder of the consultant term. So, the total value of the contract is $503,289. Bill to date by CGA is $117,889. So, the balance of the project fee for the runway project, which will be paid to Bolden make, is $385,400.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion?
Timeframes are all kind of still the same and everything?
Yeah, the timeframes are the same.
Same and everything. Okay.
Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 15 is a resolution that also involves the airport runway project.
So, after we had hired Bolden make to get on board, we had a kickoff meeting with the FAA and went over a few different elements of the runway displacement and expansion project. One of the, I'm sure they have a map. One of the items that came up was the turnaround at the north end of the runway. It's currently pretty small and pretty tight. So, after reviewing that, staff, city staff, Bolden make, agreed and requested the FAA include that as a turnaround as part of the runway expansion project. FAA agreed it was a safety concern, so they approved it to be included in the project scope. So, this is the addendum number one, work order number one, which we just approved. Just to keep things clean, we just did the work order, which basically matched the same CGA contract. Since this is beyond that original scope, we're doing the addendum two. The total cost for design and the construction administration is $49,400. 100% of those expenses would be paid out of the FAA shares.
That sounds like a plan.
Yeah.
We like those.
Liked a 100%, yeah. Motion to approve.
Second.
Here we have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 16 is a resolution concerning driveway improvement.
Property owner at 603 North Booster.
South Booster.
South Booster.
South Booster.
They would like to expand their driveway as part of the Mill and Overlay Project. They'd like to pay for it through their taxes. So, this sets forth, whenever you assess, you have to go through a number of steps of notifying, calculations, where you're going to do an assessment, or the owners can request the assessment and then do a waiver to all those processes. So, this resolution is a, basically a petition and waiver from doing all those steps. It is to add 3.5 feet in width to the driveway. The estimated cost, based on the unit amounts, is $500. Proposed to be assessed to the properties for it to be paid with real estate taxes over five equal installments at a 5% interest rate. So, the cities will perform the work and assess it, and then review the cost via taxes, additional taxes on the property.
Move to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Don and a second from Tyler. Any discussion?
So, would any homeowner have that same option along there if that was feasible?
Yeah, if they wanted to make additional improvements to what's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, assuming it fits with the standard driveway limits and things like that.
Meets requirements. Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 17, this is a resolution approving USDA grant application.
This resolution authorizes the city submit a application to the USDA World Development Community Facilities Program. It is, even though it's called community facilities, it can be used for essentially essential community facilities and services. So, an ambulance would qualify for that. The city is eligible potentially, based on the county income levels, for up to 35% grant of the total cost for the application. So, that's what we'll be submitting for. Then typically USDA can get their grant money. They require you to do a loan through them as well. If we can get, you know, 35% of what's probably looking at $200,000 ambulance, it's probably worth that, you know, than doing a loan. So, further requirements before you submit for consideration, they require that there's a formal resolution by the council authorizing the application and the mayor to sign application documents. If it's not funded, it doesn't change anything in terms of the plan to still purchase an ambulance. We'll just have to figure out how exactly we're going to fund the entire thing since there, once as we're specing it out, our costs are looking higher than what we looked like if we budgeted for, probably about the $40,000 to $50,000 higher at this point. So, we're looking at some other options, including this grant, to make up that difference.
Motion to approve the grant resolution.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 18, this involves a change order to the Mill and Overlay Project.
Change order has two elements. The first is, as part of their bid, Port Dodge Asphalt had included their own construction testing services, which had already been prepared separately by the city. So it is a deduct of $10,580, basically taking out that portion of the bid. And then there's an addition to the blocks of Rooster, excuse me, Kennedy Street that we had mentioned earlier. The total cost of that add, Kennedy Street is about $60,000 for a net of $50. Matt, do you want to speak on Rooster, or on Kennedy Street, kind of what we're looking at for improvements?
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, like I said before, with the pricing we got and our estimate being higher than the bid prices, we had some budget left over. I think our original engineer's estimate was $875,000. So with this change order, we're at 723 still, so we're still under that budget. We did look at adding another portion of Rooster Street, but after we looked at it, it's not really a mill and overlay job, it's more of a full reconstruction job, so we chose not to have it on, on this change order as an extra. So with the three blocks of Kennedy there, we're basically doing everything that we're doing on the remaining mill and overlay jobs, with the exception of the one block of Rooster with the full curb. So just minor curb patches, ADA ramp improvements, and some street patching. There's also a couple intakes down by the school that are higher than the curb, so we're going to adjust those and try and get all this done before school starts, is the goal.
That was, just was going to ask, we're getting pretty close here.
So yeah, their plan is to do Rooster first, it's kind of the biggest, that block of Rooster with all the curb is kind of the biggest task on the job, the most concrete work. So the removal sub, Purple Day, can kind of stay ahead of the concrete guys hopefully after, after they start on Rooster Street. So they're going to do, there's another block, South Rooster, due between College and Chubb and then, or South and Chubb, sorry, and then they'll start on Kennedy Street, minor curb work and street patching, so. Any questions on that?
I will note, we're not going into the intersection of Rooster from Kennedy, even though that intersection needs work. And that is because to the north there, to adequately address those improvements, we'd need to move a storm. Matt, do you want to elaborate on some of that?
Yeah, there's sanitary storms that are in monitoring that intersection, with the curb on that stretch being really flat and in really bad shape. Like I said, we looked into just doing the full curb replacement with the mill and overlay, but after looking at it, it's too flat to do that. So that's a good candidate for a full reconstruction. So instead of spending the money to overlay the intersection, I think Rooster will get in the, you know, the next five years of reconstruction, just get it all fitted in somewhere in that, is that right, Jacob? Somewhere in the near future?
Or we talked maybe if there's that hybrid between reconstruction and mill and overlay, and maybe not doing as much on the underground.
Yep. So there's some underground infrastructure in that intersection that would most likely be replaced with, with full reconstruction of Rooster or hybrid reconstruction of that block of Rooster, so no sense fixing it now to tear it up in a couple of years.
Motion to approve the change order for Mill and Overlay Street.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 19 is to approve a change order on the Teats Park Shelterhouse project.
So this was the item discussed during the work session of the six different options. My interpretation of the discussion would be to move forward with the, of the six, just to move forward with the upgrade on the thermostat, and then to inquire about additional cost breakdown or another option for adding the TV box and the wiring for. Is that...
Yes, if you're going to have somebody come for the security camera anyway, it makes sense to have them do the wiring if they can, or I'm sure they can. So that seems the most economical.
We might have to just, in terms of having the box recessed in, that seems like something we should be able to work out with the contractor, but I can do a formal change order on. So...
So, what you said, so...
So we'll look at just...
Number three, and really, and then you just need to do some more research on number one.
There's plenty of time, like you said, I think we got time to do some research on that.
I second. Here we have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Is there any further discussion on that?
I guess for people that weren't here, people may be watching this, number three is having a internet or Wi-Fi accessible thermostat there, so it could be changed from City Hall. That seems like sensible.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 20 is to approve an application for a tax exemption.
This is for new residential development at 502 West Teats Street. It's within the urban utilization area. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
So that was Don?
I can be up at the same time.
I'll go second. Okay, we have a motion from Don, a second from Rodney. Any discussion?
It's not my voice change.
Vote please, Deb.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And Melissa, we hope you enjoy your new home there. Agenda item number 21 refers to a street closure.
Scott Seewick's made a request to close a portion of State Street on September 19th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. I don't have any other additional details on that.
Yeah, I thought he was going to be here. Didn't you say he was going to be here, Rick, when he came in?
Yeah, I thought he was too, but...
He might have forgot.
Or an air conditioner called, one of the two.
Yeah, I don't know if he's talking two blocks, three blocks. This is September 19th, so you really have quite a lot of time.
We have time, we can table it for now.
Yep.
We can, you know, just reach out to Scott, let him know the general expression of the council is, yeah, I will approve the street closure on a Sunday for you, but we just need more details.
Yeah, and be specific next time.
Yeah.
So being this is agenda item, do we need to table it to wait for the, okay, move to table?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley and a second from Jody to table this. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 22 refers to two board vacancies to be filled on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. These are council appointments. Know if there were names that came before the, to come before the council?
Moni Westling, I talked to her and she had agreed to term on that.
Oh, okay.
So I move to approve, Moni.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney. Any discussion? Thank you, Moni. Vote please, Deb.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Motion carried. That's one, was there another name that surfaced?
I was working on one, but he lives outside of the city.
Okay.
The airport board of adjustment does need to be in city. I know we have some exceptions for certain boards, but...
The Airport Zoning Commission can have up to one member that was outside the city but within Cassuth County. The zoning board of adjustment section of the code for the airport doesn't make any references to anything about outside the city being eligible to sit on the board.
Okay. So at current time, are there any board members in that live outside of the city limits? On a board of adjustment?
On the Airport Board of Adjustment, no.
No.
Okay.
None currently do.
Okay. So if this candidate, then he would be eligible?
No, she's, he said on the board of adjustment.
Oh, I see, on the board, I'm sorry.
Board of Adjustment, which we're, which we're party does not allow for that.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so in town, okay. Okay, our last agenda item is number 23, and this is appointment to the cemetery board to fill the remainder of Ms. Andreessen's term. Are there any names to come before council? Okay.
Thanks for the reminder the other day, but I haven't been able to talk anybody into it yet.
Okay. All right, so it's 5:43 and we're at the end of our agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There a second?
I'll second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.